Yeah, are we live, Mike?
We're ready.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the May HR Business Services Committee on this 10th day of May at 4:33. So we will start out. We have no guest presentation this meeting, and we will move on to the departmental reports. And I know Director Severance will not be here today, so she attached her report summary. And does anybody have any questions regarding her reports that she attached in her book? I did have one quick one, and I meant to email her. When it says 45 summer school positions, and then it says 25, and then it lists, is that like 45 total, and then there's the rest of them, or 45 plus the 20? Like, is it just a whole?
I think it's 45 in total.
In total? And then teachers, elementary, high school, middle school, special.
Okay.
Yep. All right, that's it.
Just one quick comment. I know Job Fair, they set teamed up with the Job Fair, and just want to point out that they are trying multiple things to hire in an innovative way. Yet unfortunately, like for non-certified balances, you know, 10 new hires, 10 resignations.
Yeah. But at least we're keeping up with that.
It's not without creative thinking and hard work.
For sure. And then what I...
Oh, go with... I was just gonna add that she did want me to remind folks that this is open enrollment time for benefits through the 13th of May. And this is what they call passive enrollment. She has a note for just those requesting changes for now, for the next school year, and that there is another retirement information session scheduled for May 11.
And then just for our contract negotiations, there's a tentative agreement with the principals. And we see that underneath HR-5-22-3886. Started negotiations with clerical and non-certified business administrators. And I see we have a hole there, a placeholder. Will that, will that contract come for the May meeting, or will that be?
It will. I think that is intention that both of those will be placeholders for coming to you next week.
And then we have, they're gonna be starting negotiations with the Executive Employees Association on the 16th. And then we had some information shared with us today. The mediation dates are scheduled with the firemen and boilers, probably late June, early July. And then do we wanna address some questions that we had sent out earlier, just in this?
I think since Teresa's not here, she's going to address those at the board.
Okay. And then I think we set some call for meetings to have those conversations. Awesome. And then they're gonna start, we are waiting on dates to start the Duluth Districtwide Instructional Administrators Association, and then waiting on the directors to request to reconvene.
Yes.
So that's where we are at in negotiations. Questions? Ready. And moving on to business services, we'll have our departmental, our finance department report.
I don't know, Simone, if you wanna give a general update, just a real update on how things are going in our, in our finance and payroll worlds?
I think they're great. We are, we've got through payroll. We've had some staffing changes. And I utilized my payroll background and was able to jump in there, and it was good. We did it. And I had some great support from our team in finance. They, they really were amazing with entering, and HR really helped as well, so.
That's great.
We did it.
Excellent. Anything else, Kathy? We'll start budget on Thursday. We'll have our first committee of the full meeting for, to start the budgeting process.
Correct.
And then can you share the two other dates?
Yeah, then two weeks later on a Wednesday, I believe it's May 25th, will be our round two, and then June 15th is the round three, with our expectation that we'll have an adopted budget to present to the board at the regular June school board meeting. If you recall, last year, we had a special board meeting because Esther threw us out of whack, and we needed as much time as possible to get that approved. If we should have any other questions, or changes, or evolution of the budget, we could ask for a special board meeting before the end of the month of June. But I think right now, we're anticipating to have an adopted budget to you by the June regular school board meeting. Will you be able to?
I'll probably...
Okay. Good.
If I can.
Okay. Good.
All right. Any other questions for the finance department? Excellent. So let's move on to the enrollment report. And I see we have some positive adjustments, right?
Did. We are right on target from where we had asked for a budget revision back in February. If you remember, we had been at 8180 for adjusted ADM from our June 2021 budget. We came back and said we were probably a little aggressive on that budget, and had asked for a recommendation to change to 8,005. And currently, we're at 8,6.8. So, and again, we hope to continue to see some enrollment adjustments, keeping in mind that a lot of our students who are based on hours rather than days, sometimes those come in at the end of the year, so we make some adjustments there. But feeling, feeling pretty good about where we are. And as a reminder, those first three columns, the total number of enrollments, that's how many Mars documents are created every time a student enrolls or unenrolls. We have over 14,800 different touches on a student or a number of students. A student could have several if they keep enrolling in and out of a district. They could have many different enrollment activities. And then you can see that the unique student count for this year so far, we've had 9,792 different students in and out of the district at any one time. We currently are showing current humans at 8,400, but knowing that if they weren't here the day before, and they just started, they don't collect that whole year's worth of ADM. So at any one time, this is the current enrollments in the school building. But as we're adjusting for budget, we have to look at that total projected ADM based on these ratings.
Yep. And I noticed it came up from last, from April, so.
Yeah.
Questions on that? All right. Moving on, back to the child nutrition departmental report. Notice we again have a bunch of job openings at all of our different schools. And then I just, there was a note in here that said the employee shortage has affected our staffing since September 2021 and continues through March 2022. And I think that comes back to what you said, superintendent, that we're trying to be thoughtful and innovative as we get people hired. So thank, many thanks for our child nutrition staff. And then I did have a question. They, at the bottom, it says we have USDA audit prep. What, what does that mean?
So because we receive the majority of our dollars from the USDA for the pre-reduced lunch programs, and they have many, many of the rules that we must follow in terms of meal preparation, meal sizes, accountability, they are actually, they will be here on site, working with our food nutrition teams, testing at sites, and then testing our finances and record-keeping. So this is a full-fledged USDA audit.
Is this happen yearly, or does it happen?
It does not happen yearly. We get tagged every so many years. But I don't know if I've shared this before, but both the Department of Education and other organizations really love to travel to Duluth because it's so beautiful and scenic. So we become a site for a lot of people when they have to choose to audit. They're like, "Let's go to Duluth." It's like, "We're okay if you don't."
Yeah. We're fine. Perfect. Okay, so we will look forward to, maybe for June, we can just have an update on how that, or whenever that audit comes in. I appreciate an update on that.
Can I ask, are we still trying to fill positions for the remainder of the school year, or are we mainly focusing on food and nutrition exactly next year yet?
Both.
Food and nutrition are everywhere.
Well, mostly nutrition, I'm asking, but everywhere is a great day, I guess.
Yeah. And we do have summer lunch, you know, so many of our staff do the summer programs at the sites, West Myers-Wilkins and West. So we do have some of our staff, but many of our food service staff take summer jobs and choose not to participate in our programming, so we sometimes are having to hire summer help as well.
And I know it said, you know, you pointed out the comment about September 21st and March 22nd. Does that mean in April?
No.
We're good?
I'm trying to be positive here.
Yeah. We continue to have, I think it meant to say ongoing.
Yeah.
Trying to find the right spots.
Right. Appreciate that.
Great. Any other questions for child nutrition? Awesome. We'll move on to the facilities department report.
Sure. Thank you. April was a great month for maintenance operations. We completed 178 work orders, have 188 open. Our capital constructions, our capital construction, the weather conditions are now nearing, and today is a good example that we'll allow the Denfeld Tower work to begin. Condemn part windows will be starting second week of June. Myers-Wilkins has a small roof section on the north side of the building that will be completed in June. We PSS track line one lining remediation issues, and we are working with our attorney on a proposal to the contractor. Park construction tasks on the hill. Work is ongoing in the existing facilities building. Renovations are close to complete. The print shop is doing well. I talked to the staff at the print shop, and I really like the location and how it's working for them. The general site and utility work has begun from the DSC and transportation building. Any large effort by all has been ongoing to achieve required permits and agreements for the construction effort to begin. So we are moving along. Under building operations, the operations staff are performing excellent job, making your sites safe for staff, students. There are ongoing vacancies in the custodial rings that we are working on filling. A contract negotiation process, this is written in April, has begun with the firemen boilers. And under health and safety management, the additional stairway U-back chairs have been received. With these, every school with floors lacking same-level exits will have their back chair on site. Noise monitoring has begun in shop, van, choir rooms, and data collection will be completed in May. This data will help for a lot. Our hearing and conservation plan, and several schools participated in severe weather awareness week by completing tornado drills. And Matt held the third Labor Management Safety Committee meeting in the 2122 school year, and he has written several programs that are now contained on the safety website. They consist of playground safety management, radon management, personal protective equipment, and respirator safety. And the work on activities for April are there for review. And I don't know if anybody has any questions at this point.
Do we have any, any demo?
We do not at this point.
I did notice that there's a bunch of work holding on that digging for utilities up.
Correct. As you're driving on Central Entrance, a look up looks like a big speedo.
Yep.
That's a utility, well, a utility is, so.
Makes me happy every time I see it, so that's great.
Pretty exciting.
Very exciting. Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're welcome.
Now we can move on to technology.
Thank you. See, I had a typo in there. It is actually a vote in March for cybersecurity. Vote over email, and 1.2 million messages accepted delivered this last month. 72,000 were identified as spam. 4.3 thousand were identified as phishing. 9.3 were identified as phishing. 0 were identified as malware. Can I include that number? So those were all up this last one. It's like that's across the country. Human phishing, that's why it's where cyber attacks are raised. Account information, our accounts actually went down a little bit. Our storage went up slightly. Streaming share files went down slightly as well. 71 suspicious login attempts, 359 failed user login attempts. We had two data loss prevention policies that were stopped, file sharing. In E-mail bids, technology help desk tickets for the last one. 344 tickets were created, 550 tickets were resolved, which is actually down. Go ahead, pull up arrows on that one. It's a mistake. 540 tickets remain unresolved this last one. A lot of market promo repairs, we have 23 promo repairs, which is up quite a bit for the last month. Average response, time for first, your response time is down, but our wait time is quite a bit higher. Let's do a increase of our promo prepares, as well as my staff, most of my staff are working on smart boards installations the last three weeks. For the projects, I had smart boards down, and that has been completed. It was completed last night. So all of the shipping and our K2Q, as well as the media centers.
I ran into a teacher of Piedmont, and they were very happy with the new smart boards and appreciated the work that you all did outside of class time for that. So they were very, very, very appreciative.
Yeah, they mostly came in at 1:09, so I was working pretty much dual shifts.
Yeah.
So last night I got done at 10:00, but that must have been some issues.
Thank you. Appreciate that they noticed that. They really appreciate that.
Any questions?
I know what's spooky.
Where they, a lot of times they'll act as honor, Anthony, you know, pretend, or CFO wants to say, hey, they need a little transfer. So we've actually, they caught a couple of those. She was really good with that. She'll say, hey, this one doesn't look right. Emails. Most of them get caught, but there are some that go through.
Was it college? HBCU, or some of the few rural HBCUs? I can't remember. Maybe Illinois Lincoln College?
Lincoln.
You're shutting down, they could, they never, they had a malware attack?
Right somewhere.
Yep. And they just couldn't recover, like shutting down now.
Yeah, they've been in college for 157 years.
Yeah. They locked them out, so lesson there. Thank you, Mark. Transportation activity?
Yeah, the transportation report is pretty much the same as before. We have now a little bit more increases in field trips and other activities, and then just a notation that you'll see later on in the agenda. We do have a bus bid for two new buses for the next school year, so we're very excited about that because our goal of trying to reduce the age of our bus fleet and to try to get back on the track that is a good process or policy for replacement cycles. We're working on that, so yeah.
Great to see the field trip numbers keep up. That's great.
Not that I expect you to know the answer, but I, if you know this answer, I'd just be off. If you could find out and maybe let us know at some future time. I'm just curious how many miles can we put on each bus here on average? And I get that it'd be different for route and that sort of stuff, because I'm just curious, you know, how it shapes.
I can get that for you. I don't have that answer, but dang it! I thought about it earlier today. What would it have asked me to be? Sorry. We do keep track of all that, so we can definitely, you know, and then we, of course, we have our district buses, and then we have all our contracted buses, so there's that, you know, so we can definitely give you the estimate of how many miles we transport kids all over the place, so yeah.
And you might know the answer to this question, is how, how is the gas prices potentially going to affect our, our budget for next year? Because I understand that, you know, we contract for a year, right? So we're locked into a rate now?
No.
No?
We're not.
Sorry. I thought we used to do that.
Yeah. So, yeah, our... The increase, we, we had accounted for some projection that we thought the rates, the gas, the fuel rates would go up, but we didn't project this high, so we are putting in a recommendation for a little bit additional budgeting for next year for extended increase in costs. I know myself, everything's been hovering around the 3. For the first time in the last few days, I saw 404. I'm like, oh, 4. So, yeah.
Sort of miles from that point. We'd like to see those district and country. Simone gets my group's.
580. I have to do that report every summer. 581,000 miles.
How many buses total?
64 charter, so we put 90. That's not a different report, sorry. Yeah.
You still, you still get my group, right?
We have, we have 32 district buses, 64 contract.
You're right. I counted. So 31, 768, and 11.
Then we have our special education.
Thank you. Any other questions for transportation? So moving on to recommended resolutions that we'll vote on separately at the school board meeting, correct? Right? Because we pulled these off the consent agenda, so we're proper. So we have HR-5-22-3886, which is approval of the Duluth Principals Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. We also have HR-5-22-3887, approval of the Certified Bargaining Agreement, Non-Certified Business Division Administrator Association. And we will be seeing HR-5-22-388A, which is approval of Education Minnesota Duluth Clerical Local 692A, their collective bargaining agreement.
These are all placeholders right now? We anticipate they'd be there, but should something change, they would then just become placeholders?
Be coming for, yep, June, right?
Yep.
And will we get summaries or reminders or anything?
Yes.
And then moving on to acceptance of grant awards to Duluth Public Schools. This is a great one. There's just a lot of grants. This shout-out to the snack station going to Myers-Wilkins Elementary. That might have been my favorite one. So we have those, and then next we have acceptance of donations to the Duluth Public Schools. There's quite a few acceptance of donations. Miller Hill Subaru giving $3,000 to Piedmont. That will be divided on six different classrooms, so that's great. We also have quite a bit of donations here that were for the Area Learning Center for a holiday party, which is great to see. So those are acceptance of donations. Next, we move on to the HR staffing report.
I have a question about the donations.
Sure.
Someone explain to me what Project Joy is at Lincoln Park? I'm hearing about it, but I don't remember. Because it's a food shelf, right?
Project Joy is a, is a nonprofit that raises money, and they provide grant opportunities for, and I think they sometimes will provide donations, but there's, they also have a granting process. So they do help, like with the backpacks, and they do, their focus is on, on food nutrition and trying to support that, but they do many other things.
Because I know the restriction here is for food shelf, and I wasn't sure that Lincoln Park had a food shelf necessarily.
They, they do. They have a, I don't, I don't know what they call it. They have a room where they put in snacks and food for kids.
Yep. So it's different than, than like a regular food shelf?
Yes, it is.
And is it part of the community? People ask that. I don't know. But these are...
It's the very first one. Yep.
And next we have HR staffing reports that will be on the consent agenda.
I, I just wanna comment on our resignation that I see that I'm status in the segments. I just love that.
I don't know the details behind that.
I'm sad, because she's, isn't she part of the nominations for our conference for the year?
We will find out more information for you. Keegan's sixth grade math teacher, Mr. Carroll, retiring from Lincoln Park. He's a great teacher.
Mike's teacher also?
Yeah. Fantastic teacher. Bummer to see him.
When I see him, I just feel like, he can't be old enough to retire.
Right? Agreed. I agree. Cory. Moving on next. Oh, and then we have approval of individual contracts for the assistant superintendent and for the chief financial officers. Those attachments are pending. Next, we have the finance, the financial report. Do we have questions? Finance? Everything is still going okay with the new student account activities account?
It is. Perfect. Everyone's just finally adjusting to it, and I feel, yeah, I feel good about it. Everyone's been very cooperative, and they may not be thrilled by some of the things, but we're, they're being cooperative and polite, so.
And we have to do a better job of keeping accounting on all that stuff.
I will do. I will say that Simone and her team, it's maybe causing a little turbulence right now, but I think it's allowing us to have some really great conversations about how important it is for those recording and transactions, because there's just so much money. I mean, over a million dollars goes in and out of our activity accounts a year, so just making sure that we have good processes. So I just appreciate all the work they've done, and all the visits they've made to sites. We've had some new staff in buildings that we've done some training to make sure that they feel comfortable kind of working through the process. We're still all getting acclimated to Skyward on different levels, so making sure that people understand how to read their information is important, too.
It just protects the district, and it protects everybody involved, and we can count that stuff better, so thank you. Next, we have our bids, our FPs and quotes, and we have a bid to purchase two new school buses here for $234,000.
Yes, so we're very excited about that. We've realized the increase in cost of school buses over the last several years, and of course, our current economy has made it even more challenging. But this was a commitment, and as I think most of you know, we have, for the past several years, been doing a combination of buying used buses and new buses to try to help keep and make better ages for some of our fleets, for our fleet. And, but this was a round where we wanted to do these new purchases.
Great.
Thank you. With delivery dates, are we gonna see these buses before the start of next year, or before they're in here?
We've got them in and hopeful, but we know there's been a lot of delays.
Any other questions? Now moving on to contracts, change orders, and leases. We have a change order here from Kraus Anderson Construction on a, for Denfeld?
Correct. This was a project that was approved a year ago, but Jackie Ward, a special education program, took more of the roughly $225,000 to construct the bathroom that we needed on the first floor in a new special education room. We made some modifications, and the bidding climate has actually improved, and we're down to the $165,000 range. And they can afford it this year. It's pretty much the same project, and it's procured through Courtney and ESI QC and state contractor here in purchasing. So it's an approved project a year ago that we rebid. It's $50,000 less. We're getting about the same thing, and that's what special education needs at that level for the program to.
So it will help special education make it easier for faculty, students?
It will allow them to have a suite on the first floor where they intend to put in a new special education room.
Great.
This is being paid for by federal funds, so we had to get approval from the Department of Education. So this whole project...
Federal or state?
Federal.
Federal.
Yeah, we're using our federal 419. And we had to go through an application process with the Department of Education to get approval for this. We did one at Lincoln Park Middle School two years ago, and now that student has aged into Denfeld, so we're doing that same accommodation here.
Great. Okay, so you're comfortable with everything? Was it good?
It was good.
All right, then I'm good with it.
Thank you.
Okay, then next we have... On the facility, what was it? What was this, this view?
Well, this comes from ACSCP. This is a big report that we get each week.
Got it. Okay, and so this has to do, oh, Central on the hill?
Central.
Okay. So next we have the project for Central on the hill, and this just a central... So, next we have the project for Central on the Hill, and this just essentially talks about everything you talked about in the facilities.
That was, yeah, that's the work that's being done. So, it's a general overview of what will be cycle.
Alana, it says under upcoming form memo, under upcoming activities and next step, it says Central on the Hill will have demolition document prepared in the coming months. The district intends to have the demolition publicly bid and have the Central High School attached for that.
I've read that, I just didn't know, didn't get it.
Still learned.
Okay, thank you. And, and will the school board be notified of that date? Or is it just going to be in an agenda somewhere?
Are, are we going to have any kind of celebration or goodbye ceremony, or, you know, ceremonial knocking down?
Yeah. We've had some conversations, and we'll have some more. There's a lot of safety issues right now at the site because it is under construction. So, we're working with our project manager to see what options we may have in order to safely have some opportunities to celebrate the, the history.
We have under miscellaneous informational items, we have no action associated with these. We have the district property updates that talks about the Central on the Hill property. It's back on the market, it's being marketed. You can look on the back to see where the website advertising is, so they're continuing work on them. Anything to add other than that? I think that's good. Now, moving on to expenditure contracts. You can look below to see the different expenditure contracts that are listed. Nope, I'm sorry. These are the expenditure contracts, and then we have all of the associated contracts that go with those, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on any of the expenditure contracts?
I have, I have a question on the modern classrooms project, the 80 subscriptions to the online membership program. That's intended for, for a certain, certain teachers, or?
Yeah, this, other participants in that.
This one came through curriculum?
Modern classrooms project subscriptions.
It's on the, it's on the bottom of the first extension, forgot to write it. It's $40,000.
Just looking through the packet, I think it's.
I had, I had a briefie for it, but I couldn't see it.
We can, um.
Yeah, is there something I can, I'll, I'll back up?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, I don't think we had any no-cost contracts on 136, which one was that? Oh, the no-cost contract, no. These had to do with yearbooks, right?
Yeah, like, we, these are our favorites. They come every year and we have to sign these, so.
Yes, I love the yearbooks. Okay, so we have the yearbooks for no cost, that's where I was just at, right? Then for grant applications, we have none, no change order signs, and no referrals to the policy committee, correct?
Correct.
I think, that's it.
I did just want to share, this past week or so, we've had several, it's a very festive time to be doing fundraising and collecting up donations. And we did send out a reminder to all of our staff, building leaders, to share with their staff about crowdfunding and best practice related to donations and collections. We're just wanting to make sure we're protecting our staff, and there's, there's a lot to be said about the convenience of getting money to and from schools, but we have to make sure we follow our processes, so we just sent out a very nice reminder. I know Superintendent Magis had received some information, and he shared, followed back up with some leaders, so we're just putting that out there, and it'll be in our employee newsletter too, so.
Is that the kind of money that, that needs to flow through our new student activities fund?
Correct.
Right now.
Heard that.
Yeah.
News scheme.
It is.
It can still be done, we just have to make sure.
Absolutely, yep. And one of our reminders about crowdfunding is we are Duluth Public Schools. We passed a policy and a regulation that went along with that to help support things like Donors Choose, which is kind of our district recommended place. GoFundMe is also a very common one. We try to check through the fees and structures so that it puts as much money as we can to the district versus having to pay fees and those type of things. And so, it's just making sure that we're re-acclimating some of our new clericals and some of our new building leaders, that we have these processes and policies. Sometimes they're a little cumbersome to start out with, but once they get going, they can be very, very successful.
I would say anybody who, you know, might have been stepping out from those guidelines was doing so with good intent. And, and so are, are reteaching and.
And that's still, I think I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
And that's still going to be able to go, like, everybody's still.
Yep, we're just asking from this point forward to please use our best practice model, so, yeah.
And that keeps, that keeps the, the person raising the funds safe as well?
Yeah, agreed.
Any potential allegations or?
Yeah.
I mean, I would hate to see an employee be accused of pocketing some money or that kind of stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, following, following district guidelines or whatever.
Yep, and to be honest, the reason we had to do all of this stuff for student activities by the Department of Education is the student activities are one of the highest levels of fraud in school districts. And just for no other reason than there's so much small change, money, cash exchanging, and they just, they just need to see that we're, we have good processes in place. So, we're, we're getting there, and our teams have been doing a really good job, and so have our buildings. I do want people to know, this was more just a reminder and a refresher to say, you know, we, we have policies we have to follow, and, and we want to make sure that when we get audited, our auditors don't question how things are being pulled together. So, we appreciate it and all the work that our staff are doing.
Perfect. Anything else? Let's go enjoy a beautiful day, Duluthians. Thank you.